Good evening. I call this meeting to order. It's the regular city council meeting. February 24th, 2020. The time is 7:30 PM. Will the clerk please take roll call?
Councilman Bliss. Councilwoman Clark?
Here.
Councilman Corbett?
Here.
Mayor Proton Graffstein?
Here.
Councilor Roebuck?
Here.
Councilman Soltis?
Here.
Mayor Hartwell?
I'm here. Is there a motion to excuse Mayor Pro-- I'm sorry. Councilman Bliss from tonight's meeting?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mrs. Clark?
I'd like to excuse Council-- or make a motion to excuse Councilman Bliss from tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir?
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to excuse Mr. Bliss from tonight's meeting. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion carries. Would you please rise if you're able for an invocation to be led by Councilwoman Clark. Remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. For tonight's invocation, I'd like to quote Gary Vaynerchuk. There is a saying I heard a long time ago, and it goes like this. There are two ways to build the biggest building in town. One, build the biggest building in town. Two, tear down all the other buildings around you. I encourage you to give a lot of thought how the world is now structured. Everybody is now sharing their thoughts, opinions, and actions at scale. With social networks, word of mouth now has global plumbing, and one's reputation has never mattered more. Whether it's how you treat an intern or a CEO, they're equally human. In the long term, the people who work together and build the biggest building now will end up having a better life at the end. End quote. We have a unique opportunity as a community to come together and build the biggest building, to create the best city, to improve the quality of lives of everyone around us. There are a million ways to do this, but here are my top three. One, connect through the most effective methods of communication. Two, volunteer your time to causes that matter to you. And three, get out and vote and help shape the policies for the greater good of your community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. Please be seated. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? All right, we can go to presentations. We have one tonight. It's regarding the Madison Heights cleanup efforts. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes. City Council is scheduled to give certificates of appreciation to the administrators of the Madison Heights Cleanup Group for their countless hours of researching, organizing, and handling information related to electroplating I-696 incident, and for research and advocacy for changes to legislation to prevent future environmental crisis, not only in Madison Heights but across the state. So, we have-- we are recognizing Amy Lewis, Jennifer Zmalsik, and Beth Bromley Skye.
Would you please come up to accept these certificates?
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, the meeting is now open to the public. If anyone would like to address city council on any subject, now is your opportunity. Please come to the microphone in the center of the room. The meeting is open to the public. Good evening.
Good evening. Pat Shields, resident of Madison Heights. I have an issue with the addendum amendment to the ordinance for marijuana. When I read location requirements, it goes on to say, "No medical marijuana facility shall be located or be adjacent to or abut a school, a building, a church, et cetera, et cetera." What does "abut" mean? My neighbor's house abuts me. If that's too close, maybe the next neighbor's house. Then it goes on to say, "Marijuana facility shall be located at a distance determined to be adequately separate." Adequately separate, these locations for marijuana facility. Who is going to judge what is adequate? Is it going to be this council that the majority are for marijuana? Who is going to make that determination? We have Bishop Foley High School. There is a athletic club just adjacent to it. Are you going to approve that? I think clarification has to be made on this before any vote gets taken. I would also like to know if this is the map that we're going to use, or is there another map that we, the citizens, aren't aware of? I think before anything occurs this evening on a vote for that, it should be tabled until more clarification is given to that particular paragraph. It is ambiguous. What is that word? You know what I was saying. And we're open to all kinds of interpretation. Thank you.
Anyone else? Good evening.
Hello. Cindy Holder, 901 East Lincoln. Couple of things, going back to this marijuana thing. I'm wondering, what's the limit in contributions that makes you guys ineligible to vote on these things? Everyone has access to the Oakland County Elections website. Type in any one of your names, and all the money that's given to you shows up. Most of it's easily traced, some of it isn't. Mr. Bliss had $0 that was easily traced to marijuana donations. Mr. Corbett, looks like he had one from Helios that was on the list that applied $250. Mr. Soltis, zero. Ms. Clark, J.S. Ashley/Hallistic, number one on your list, $950 to her personally. Oak Hudson Pharma, $250. She got a total of $2,500 in easily traced marijuana ties. Mrs. Roeback, $2,425. J.S. Ashley/Hallistic, $750. Helios, $250. Rosalind Graffstein, who wasn't even running for election, $3,700. J.S. Ashley/Hallistic, $1,600. And the mayor, Brian Hartwell, $4,100 from Hallistic/GS Ashley, $300 from Helios, with a total of traceable, that I'm not an expert, marijuana money, $13,050. For a grand total, from Hallistic-GS Ashley, $7,400. Helios, $550. Oak Hudson Pharma, $250. There has to be a limit. There has to be a line that you guys compromise yourselves to be representing us in an effectual way. How can this not be looked at as some sort of personal asset? I'm very concerned about this. And like I said, I didn't deep-dig any deeper than put the companies in, look up the LLCs. There might be more. Maybe there's no more. But there really is, I don't want to say ethical, but there's a challenge here for you representing us. We've never had this kind of money. Oh, and by the way, the other thing that would be interesting is, without almost exception, this money didn't start till September 1st. So in less than 60 days, this money was collected by most of you sitting here. I have a major concern about that. Needs to be known it's public knowledge, and I don't know that I can say that you guys should be voting on anything that has to do with any of the companies that you've taken money from. Because you have taken money. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address city council? The meeting is still open to the public. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My topic is not marijuana-related.
Would you like to give us your name?
Do you want me to have a seat till later?
Oh, no. Would you like to give us your name?
What's that?
Your name, sir.
Oh, sorry. I forgot all about that. My name is Jay Taylor. I live at 2915 West 13 Mile in Royal Oak. I've noticed that there's a section of eastbound 14 Mile under I-75 that is littered. It's up on the sidewalk. You can't see it from the street. But there's litter, there's junk on both sides of the sidewalk, of that narrow sidewalk. And I know that the road commission has been getting complaints about I-75 under 8 Mile to 13. I can't verify that, but I can verify under 14 Mile. I do know that it is MDOT jurisdiction. I have reached out to MDOT. I've reached out to our state rep to modernize I-75. And the only response I get is from Modernized I-75, who has said, "Thank you for the information. We'll check into it later." And it has been junked up since mid-December. And as of this past Friday, when I was last there, it is still junked up. I have reached out to DPS here in Madison Heights. Even, you know, like I say, I know it's MDOT jurisdiction, but I was hoping somebody from the city could at least push some buttons to MDOT to get their contractors to clean it up. And so far, I've gotten nothing. And I realize I'm just kind of, sort of at wit's end to try to figure out, what do I do next, other than personally clean it up myself? Anybody? No, I guess not.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for listening.
Would anyone else like to address city council on any subject? Good evening.
Good evening. Deliza Lee, 31800 Harlow Drive. I wanted to talk about the event that we had at the fire department last Thursday for the teen suicide. And I just personally want to thank the coalition and everyone that attended and supported the event. It was well-received, and a lot of understanding and updates had went on that day. We are not yet decided on our next event, but I just want to thank everyone that has supported and attended. Thanks.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address city council on any subject?
Hello, council. Mayor, my name is Vida Palazzolo, 27074 Nanton. I really was not going to get up tonight. Usually I do, because I really like to praise you guys, and I still do. I appreciate the work you're doing. And, but after hearing a few comments about the medical marijuana, I felt a need to stand up. I am not for recreational marijuana, so I'll set that straight right now. But as a, as a person who has multiple sclerosis and who has had it for almost 10 years now, I want to speak to some of the benefits of the medical marijuana that is coming into our city. It saddens me that there are people focusing more on how close the facility is, to what neighborhood or whatsoever. Yeah, there was a mess-up. Yeah, there was something wrong with the map. But the council is willing to work on that, and I appreciate that you're going to amend that. It's not like people are going to be lighting up in the parking lot and having pot parties. It's medical marijuana. It's medicine to the body. It's, if you are any person of any faith or have a spiritual life, look it up in the Bible. There are medical benefits that go back to plants and herbs. And quite honestly, if you dealt with the kind of pain that people with chronic illnesses deal with every day of their life, you wouldn't want to put opioid in your body anymore either. I recently started taking the CBD oils, and I can tell you, they have stretched how farther out it is before I have to take another gabapentin or neurontin, as it is officially called, which is an opioid. And because of the opioid crisis, the people that do struggle with chronic illnesses are having trouble getting our medication because it's limited now. So, that really stinks. I am blessed that our city is taking a look at it. I had a nice conversation with the owner of the facility that is going in the MAC building, Mr. Bahura, I think, or Mike. Wonderful man. I think if some of the community would not only go back to last week's council meeting and listen to what he had to say, but contact him personally and get to know him. This man has a passion for helping people, and that speaks volumes in our city. That's what Madison Heights is all about. Whether we're cleaning an underpass, which I bet will get done, because I know somebody up here that will do it, or whether it's reaching out to somebody who doesn't have something to eat, Madison Heights is on top of it. We do our best to take care of our people and beyond. And I'm grateful for that. So, I thank you for that. And I am kind of losing my train of thought, but I had a couple of things I wanted to say. But I'm just grateful for our council, and I really hope that the city will take a second, or our city residents will take another look at the pros instead of the cons that, quite honestly, don't even need to put into a column of cons. Let's take care of each other and continue to do what we do. We're a city of progress. And, oh, I know what I was going to say. The issue about taking money. It's not taking money. It's called lobbying. And that's what politics are all about. It's not dirty laundering money that was offered to your candidacy. You could have said no to it, and that's fine and dandy. I'm glad you said yes to it. When's the last time our city had such wonderful money coming in to be able to better our parks and wrecks, take care of our own? Like, again, I spoke to Mike. Put some ADA equipment into the city parks for children, and so they can be included. It's not dirty marijuana money. You want to put a cap on it? I don't know how that's done. All I know is, I'm grateful to our city and what's in store for us, and I look forward to doing what I can as a volunteer to make it the best it can be.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address city council? Good evening.
Amy Lewis, 1399 Christine Terrace. As you know, this isn't my normal thing, but it's starting to become something. I just want to back up what Vida has said. I actually use CBD oil for migraines. I've known two people who have went through chemo and radiation for cancer treatments, and nothing had helped. But there is an oil called Rick Simpson Oil that helped them. I also know of stories of a young little girl that lived in Wisconsin or Minnesota, when they first opened the marijuana in Colorado and Wisconsin. She was having approximately, it was a seizure every, on average, every three minutes. She couldn't go outside. She couldn't play. She was four, five, six years old. Her parents had a ton of pills they were giving her. What had happened was that parents had tried everything, all lost cause. You do what you can for your kids. So, the dad went out to Colorado, got some of the, a little bit of serum, and it was like a cough syrup, brought it back to Minnesota or Wisconsin, wherever they were from, gave it to their daughter. About a year or two later, they had an update story. By the way, these stories are actually from CNN, from Dr. Sanjay Gupta. He had an hour programs called Weed, Weed 2, and Weed 3. I think there's a fourth one as well. But this girl can go outside and play. She has an active life. And there are a lot of great benefits to medical marijuana. And I just want to make sure that that is said in public, because I think a lot of people are looking at a lot of bad things because marijuana has been looked at as a drug. But honestly, we should, we look at drugs, we need to look at opioids. I had back surgery last year. I left Royal Oak Beaumont Hospital with a prescription that said, it was the 10-325, it's the highest opioids, said it was 90 pills to take for a week, every three hours. I talked to a friend that night, and she's like, "No, that's not right. You should check that out." I looked on the internet. Should be every eight hours. I called my, I did the every eight hours, waited till the next morning, called my doctor. It was only then when my doctor told me, "No, you should take those pills only every three hours for the first couple of days, and then wing yourself off of them." Our problems are with opioids. I think we need to look at that rather than the benefits of what marijuana can do for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address city council on any subject? All right, we'll continue on the agenda. Next for consideration will be ordinances. There are three for review tonight. The first is Agenda Item G1. It's Ordinance 2148, the Medical Marijuana Facilities Amendment on Second Reading. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes. This ordinance amendment was created at the request of city council and amend Section 7310 of Article 16 of Chapter 7 that proposes to retroactively amend the location requirements for medical marijuana facilities in the city, to eliminate measurement language from the ordinance, and to provide for an official map published and relied upon by the city and the public as the official and controlling means in establishing the parcel-by-parcel locations allowed for medical marijuana facilities in the city. In August of 2019, the city awarded two co-located medical marijuana facility licenses pursuant to Ordinance 2129, which authorized a limited number of medical marijuana facilities in the city. In October, a member of the public questioned whether the distance of the licensed medical marijuana facility at 2 Ajax was within the 500 feet of the residential district. A response was submitted indicating the city relied upon GIS measurements and that the ordinance specifically identifies that an official map as controlling and as to the established green zones in the city. This error occurred when the adjacent GIS overlay was removed due to an exception in the ordinance, which created a map that placed 2 Ajax drive within 500 feet of the residence. Thus, the parcel was included in the allowable map to allow the medical marijuana facility on the official map published by the city. However, 2 Ajax is closer than 500 feet to a residential property. This fact was inadvertently missed in the final map that was published to establish the official green zone map. This official map was relied upon by the city, the public, and the applicants. Given the specific and stated intent of desiring to avoid confusion and the complication over ordinance language by not measuring separation distances and instead developing and relying upon an official map as the controlling means in establishing a parcel-by-parcel locations allowed for medical marijuana facilities in the city, this ordinance amendment has been drafted by legal council. Because state law leaves each municipality to its complete discretion as to the location of facilities within its boundaries, this proposed ordinance amendment is appropriate to clarify the express, the intent of the legislation to designate the officially published map as establishing the parcels allowed for medical marijuana facilities in the city. If council wishes to amend this ordinance, the appropriate action would be to approve Ordinance 2148 to amend Section 7310 of Article 16 of Chapter 7 regarding location requirements for medical marijuana facilities on the second reading.
Thank you, Mrs. Marsh. What's the wish of city council?
Your Honor?
Mayor Proton Graffstein?
I would actually like to table the vote. I'm not quite sure the wording I need to put on this, but I would like to table the vote to amend the ordinance 2148.
It'd be helpful if you could give a specific timeframe?
Um, two weeks.
Until the next regular meeting?
Next meeting.
March the 9th.
March 9th.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Graffstein made a motion to table discussion of this subject until March 9th. Is there support for the motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Clark?
I'll support.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to table ordinance 2148 until the next regular city council meeting, which will be March 9th, 2020. Is there discussion on tabling?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
So, can the maker of the motion explain why the delay?
I think that Mrs. Shields has brought up a couple of things that I just want to make sure that we're not doing this again in another six months. So...
So...
No, I just, I want to make sure we get it right this time. I mean, it seems to me that this was an administrative issue, and I just want to make sure that it's right. I want the public to have a chance to look at what the draft changes are. I hope I'm using the correct wording here. That the map does measure up, that if anyone sees something and says, "Oh, there's this. I have a question that we've addressed this." I do not want to drag this out for another six months, but I don't want to be back here in six months doing this again because someone found out that this wasn't quite right, and then we have questions. So, I'd like to wait for two weeks. It's up for vote. I can get it voted on this, but I'd like to just table it till the next meeting.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
So, the intention is for the public to read over this document, and if they have questions, they can bring it up in next council session?
I would prefer that they bring it up prior. I mean, everyone on council has an email and a phone number. They can contact us if they have questions. I don't know if they can contact the attorneys directly, but if they, if someone contacts me and says, "I have a question about this specific property," or whatever it is with the wording. I mean, ambiguity was the term that Mrs. Shields was looking at. So, if someone else comes up with something and says, "This seems ambiguous. Maybe we need to tighten it up?" I guess I would contact the attorney, and they could tweak it if needed. We very well may keep it the way it is, or we very well may keep the amendment the way the amendment is set up and be voting on this exact same wording in two weeks. I just want to give everybody the opportunity to take one last look, and if there's any changes that we need to make, that we make them in the next two weeks.
Your Honor, but again, we, if someone does have an issue and they email the city attorney, we, you know, Open Meetings Act, we can't discuss it until we come to session the next time.
Okay. I'll rephrase that. If someone, I believe that if someone said to me, okay, for example, if this was going on a year ago, before this map and this ordinance was actually approved, and someone said, "Hey, did you realize that the MAC gym is smack in the middle of whatever, you know, this 400, this 450, whatever it is, it shouldn't be there?" Then I would contact the attorney, and I expect that the attorney would have made the change at that point. I could be wrong. This is speculation, but I would expect that they would have made the change at that time, and we wouldn't be in this situation.
Right. No.
So, I don't know if there's other properties that may be in there. I'm just, you're welcome to vote to approve it tonight, but I would like just to take an extra couple of weeks and table it for two weeks. Next meeting, March 9th.
No, Your Honor, I'm just trying to clarify what you mean, the means of it, because, I mean, I'm not, I'm obviously against it. So, that's, you know, it doesn't matter if we wait two weeks or not. But I just want to let the public know what your intentions are, how they can make change if they want to, or how they want to express that. And so it's just, I'm trying to find out the details of the means and how to do that.
Okay.
So then they know.
Sure. And I don't mean to change it as in massive changes. I mean, exactly what I've stated, and I'll repeat that. If this was happening a year ago, and someone said, "I've looked at the map. I've done the measurements. It looks to me like the MAC gym is within this 500 feet," I would take it to the attorney. And that, I guess that would be privileged, and I can't tell people that. So, I don't know. I would take it to the city manager. I would take it to somebody that I could take it to, all right? And I would ask them to look into it. And then I am speculating that if it was brought to the attention of council, or the attorney, or the city manager, or somebody, and I can say that if it was brought to my attention prior to the approval, that there is a specific property, then I would ask that it gets looked into, so that we're not in this situation now. Does that make sense?
Your Honor, can we ask the city attorney his opinion on this, how this could, would work?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It's, the motion on the floor is a motion to, to... It's, the motion on the floor is a motion to, to postpone to a date certain or a motion to table. If anyone has any comments that they'd like to make, the best way to proceed would be to provide it to the city manager, who will then provide it to legal counsel if necessary and, and then the attorneys will respond to council on any issues that might come up. It's strictly up to council as to whether they want to delay it. As everyone can see, we only have six members of council here. If council wanted to delay it because they wanted every member of council to vote on it, they could do it for that reason or no reason. But that's the way we would handle any revisions. It's not ambiguous, it's not unclear, the official map is the official map, it was the intention from the beginning. A mistake was made relating to GIS concerning overlays and now that has been, that has been dealt with and all this ordinance amendment does is reiterate what the original intent of council was, not to get into an issue of how do you define the 500 feet, where does it start? And this is intended to avoid all of that.
Your Honor, isn't this final draft just dismiss the 500 feet? It's, makes it go away, correct?
It, it does because the official map is controlling and it identifies which parcels are eligible, which are not.
Right, but then, excuse me, Your Honor?
Can we limit debate to whether to table or not the merits of tabling?
Well, just one, can I just make one more comment, please?
Okay.
So, but then that can be changed, correct? I mean, the green zones can be changed in the future. That's possible, correct?
The, it's, the intent is, is that is the official map of the city. If council chooses to change it down the road, that's up to council.
Thank you.
Any more discussion on the merits of tabling this discussion? All right, the motion on the floor is to postpone discussion of Ordinance 2148 until the next regular City Council meeting of March 9th, 2020. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. The next ordinance for consideration is Agenda Item G2. It's Ordinance 2149 regarding unsolicited materials on second reading. Mrs. Marsh?
Per the request of several council members, we have prepared a draft to the proposed ordinance amendment that adds restrictions on the replacement of unsolicited written materials on the property in the city. Currently, residents often receive unsolicited materials deposited in driveway approaches. This unsolicited material also migrates to public streets and other public property and is a nuisance, blight and litter. The U.S. Court of Appeals recently issued a decision on this subject that gave municipalities guidance on constitutional and acceptable ordinance language that municipalities could enact to address this concern. This proposed ordinance amendment is substantially similar and based on the ordinance language that the U.S. Court of Appeals approved in that opinion. In summary, this ordinance requires any unsolicited written materials delivered to the premises to be placed on a porch if one exists near the front door, securely attached to the front door, or through the door slot on the front door or the principal building structure used by the postal service, between the exterior front door if one exists and is unlocked and the interior front door, where permitted in a distribution box located on or adjacent to the premises, adjacent to a postal box near the front door, or personally with the owner, occupant and/or leasing of the premises. Any person who places or causes to be placed unsolicited written materials in areas on or adjacent to the premises other than those set forth above shall be responsible for a civil infraction and a civil fine of $100. If council wishes to add this ordinance, the appropriate action would be to approve Ordinance 2149 regarding unsolicited materials on second reading.
Thank you. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Sir, I move that the council approve on second reading Ordinance 2149 related to unsolicited materials being distributed.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Mrs. Graffstein?
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve on second reading, Ordinance Number 2149 regarding unsolicited materials. Is there discussion from council?
Your Honor?
Oh, yes.
I just, I have one point that I'd like to get clarification on.
Please.
It's stated that it's a hundred dollar fine every time, or I guess it's a hundred dollar fine. So my question is, if I get this and my neighbor gets it, is that $100 or $200? And then if I get it this week and then next week I get it, is that $100 or $200? Does it, is it going to be $100 for the entire city and then five months later, another $100? Or will it actually be every single time I have this, my neighbor has it, everyone on my block has it, everyone on the city has it? Is it going to be a real fine or is it going to be $100 every couple of months?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Even though the, the ordinance is written in such a way that each violation could be issued, a separate citation could be issued for each violation with a hundred dollar fine, $100 civil infraction fine attached to it, so that each, each property could be issued a ticket. I don't, I don't really foresee the reality of it is that what we would intend to do is not write 500 tickets and bombard the court with the tickets, but issue tickets to the responsible party being the corporation, people relating to the corporation that's involved in distributing these materials, not the actual teenagers or whomever are dropping them off on the driveways. So, so the plan is to, to, for there to be compliance, you need to witness the person in order to issue a civil infraction. And then the person is related to a company that's doing the distribution and our intent would be to enforce it against the corporation rather than the person actually dropping it off on the driveway.
Okay, Your Honor?
Yes, please.
Okay, so if I have a security camera and it catches the person dropping the newspaper at the bottom of my driveway, then that would be a hundred dollar fine to the corporation that this person works for. Is that correct?
Our intention would be to cite the corporation, not the, not the paper boy dropping it off.
Okay. If I do not have a security camera, but it's there and all my neighbors have a paper in front of their house and their driveway, but none of us have security cameras, then there is, this can't be enforced.
Well, there is, the enforcement aspect of it is, is, is a practical issue. You have to be able to witness the person do it, you have to be able to identify the person and then relate that back to the company this person is working for in order for it to proceed.
Mr. Mayor, I just have one suggestion or maybe one question. What definitive proof would our neighbors need to present to prove that those papers were dropped off by someone in order to take it the next step further to go to court to get those fines in place?
They would need to be able to identify the person who delivered the paper.
So like a picture of their face?
As in any case, and we would be able to demonstrate and prove who the person works for in order to proceed with the case. If it's just dropped off and no one sees who did it, it's, it's, it's no different than someone making a mark on your car in a parking lot and if you can't identify the person, there is no case.
So pictures of their face, pictures of their drivers or their license plate number, pictures of their car, as much detail as you can provide as possible. Because that's a good message to send out to our residents because I know we have a lot of people who are like, I don't want these papers in my yard anymore. So they might, if we send the message out there, they might be diligent and start collecting that data so that we can revisit the company once and for all. Is there a communication push that the city is going to do directly to these companies that we know are habitual offenders to let them know that this ordinance is now in place and that they need to be respectful of our boundaries?
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure what the police department's going to do in that regard, but the intention is not to overwhelm the court system by writing each separate day of separate violations, but to get their attention right from the get-go as soon as the ordinance goes into effect.
So, Mayor, the, we do have contacts at least at the Daily Tribune that we call when residents call us and we have already planned on sending a copy of the ordinance with a cover letter to them tomorrow if it's approved tonight, so they at least have a heads up that it's happening. So if there's somebody other than the Daily Tribune, we just need a list of all of those different places.
I know a lot of our residents have called the phone number that's available too. Is that a number that the city can push out to the residents just as a regular, as this progresses, so that they get that information regularly to remember to reach out to this company and let them know that they no longer wish to receive a paper?
Okay.
I feel like maybe if they were getting enough information from concerned residents, they might get the message.
This is definitely a step in the right direction to limit litter and blight, but there's 10,000 houses and apartments in the city of Madison Heights. I mean, these companies spend tens of thousands of dollars for each of these mailings and so a hundred dollar fine on top of that, it's not even going to get their attention. So I don't really think the punishment will do anything to change these business models. But I guess we're, we're heading in the right direction, so I'll be voting ayes. Any other discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Is it possible to increase the hundred dollars to a thousand dollars? That might hurt a little bit more?
I think we're limited to $500 maximum.
$500? Mm-hmm.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Having been on all sides of this particular issue over the last 45 years, I can't speak to the legal aspect of it necessarily, but as far as trying to establish who's responsible, who did it and so on, the judge did not just fall off the hay wagon yesterday. He's perfectly capable of understanding when, you know, Bob Corbett Company papers are all over a neighborhood and, you know, Bob Corbett is seen at the end of the street and his kids are running up and down. I mean, I'm going to guess you can probably make a reasonable determination who's responsible. So I don't, I don't think the viability of the ordinance is perhaps the issue. We may want to revisit the amount of the fine later on. You don't want to, somebody comes to town and decides they're going to pass out stuff for their new pizzeria, you don't necessarily want to take them out of business first day with, because they didn't get the ordinance notice by, by going up and down the streets and handing it out and all of a sudden they violate. So I think give people a chance to, a second chance and then we might want to look at a scale, kind of an approach later on, but, but as the mayor said, I think in this case, it's a good start and it's something we didn't have at all for a long time as far as being able to police and maintain our neighborhoods, so that's all. Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes, please.
Just want to clarify something with the city clerk. If I am starting a pizza company in the city, I have to get permission from the city clerk. I have to pay something, some nominal fee. Is that correct?
To start a business?
But no, to deliver my flyers.
Oh, yes, Your Honor. We do have a, a peddler's and a solicitation license through the city clerk's office. We also established last year the No-NAC registry, so if anybody does come to get a permit to solicit or do hangers or fires, they are given a list of all the addresses where they are not to go to.
And, and should we pass this ordinance tonight, will you also let them know they're not to be left at the bottom of the driveway?
That's already part of the, yes.
Figured it was. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
One other comment. The ordinance specifies where it can be left. With regard to the fine, as the mayor mentioned, under our code of ordinances, the maximum is 500. With regard to fireworks, for example, when we adopted, incorporated by reference to state law relating to fireworks, the state legislature specifically allowed us to increase the fines to $1,000. But typically, it's up to $500 for any violation of our code of ordinances. We could, depending upon how things work out, have stepped up fines for second offense, third offense, up to 500 if we chose to do so. But the goal is, the goal like any of the ordinances is compliance. We want people to comply with the ordinance. It's not a money-making proposition. It's to stop the blight and, and to help our citizens out from having things dropped on their driveway that they haven't asked for.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you, city clerk.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. The next ordinance for review is Agenda Item G3. It's Ordinance 2150 regarding the police employment standards. Mrs. Marsh?
The Police Department has requested an ordinance amendment that updates the current Madison Heights Code of Ordnances pertaining to the legally required selection and employment standards for law enforcement officers. Currently, Chapter 20, Article 2 of Section 20-17 of the Code of Ordnances defines specific minimum employment standards for law enforcement officers, which is required by state law. However, over the years, the state law and state administrative rules concerning these standards has changed and our code of ordinances needs to be updated to stay current and consistent with these continuously changing standards. Therefore, attached for your consideration is a proposal amendment to the City of Madison Heights Code of Ordnances that adopts by reference the legally required state selection and employment standards for law enforcement officers. Rather than define the specific standards in the proposed ordinance amendment, we have drafted the ordinance that adopts by reference all applicable standards contained in the rules of the Michigan Administrative Code and any future amendments to those rules. By doing so, each time the administrative rules are changed or amended by the state, this selection automatically references and refers to those rules without the need to amend our code of ordinances. This avoids the necessity of amending our code of ordinances each time the administrative rules are updated by the state. If council wishes to add this ordinance, the appropriate action would be to approve 2150 regarding police employment standards on second reading.
Thank you. What's the wish of City Council?
Your Honor?
Mrs. Rorback?
I move that we approve Ordinance 2150 regarding police employment standards on the second reading.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Clerk?
I'll support.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve on second reading, Ordinance Number 2150 regarding police employment standards. Is there discussion? All right, let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. The next agenda item are boards and commission appointments and the clerk has instructed us, we have a couple of options for motions. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
No.
Okay. Do you like to say anything?
Um, no, it's just I presented the council with a list of all the members that are wishing to be renewed if, if that's the board's choice, I mean, the council's choice and those new applicants as well.
Well, I can try to make the mayor's appointments easier and I would offer for council's considerations, for those limited boards that I have the opportunity to make appointments, I would, I'll just read a list of names on the board and then if council wants to approve them all on the lump sum, that's fine. Or if there's objections to doing them in bulk, I understand. But I'd ask council would confirm my appointment of Nellie Brown to the Crime Commission, a term expiring in August 2022. And then my, confirm my appointments to the DDA and BRA of Ruth Charleboy, Mike Shepherd and Joe Keys on terms to expire February 2024. And then I'd ask this council to confirm my appointments to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board of Jeremy Carroll, Brian Gettle, John Zerugian and Michael Morris, two terms expiring February 2022. And that would include, that would conclude my appointments this evening.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Sir, I would move the council confirm your nominations.
Thank you, sir. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Mayor Proton Graffstein?
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to confirm the mayor's appointments to those boards and commissions. Is there any discussion from council? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Is there any council action on other boards?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If the council's going to do confirmations, then I will need to abstain on, on at least one of those anyway. So.
Understood.
I have no objection to any of the appointees, especially one in particular, but it's best that I abstain on that vote, sir.
Okay, I'll recognize it, of course. Any motions from members of council?
Your Honor, are we, are we doing the same then? We're just everybody in one shot? Motion for, are we doing them each individually?
May I suggest something?
Yes.
Why don't we do everything but the zoning board and then, then you can do the zoning board and I'll sit out? So, sir, I would move to reappoint to the Arts Board Genevieve Sandoval, to the Environmental Citizens Committee Michael Sally, to the Historic Commission. How many are actually open there? I want to be clear on that before I I want to be clear on that before I dive in. Are they all open?
Your Honor, those are all open seats. There are one, two, three, four, five regular seats, one alternate seat of the regulars. Four of them are expiring in '23, and one in '21.
All right, well, for this evening's purposes, I would move to appoint Jennifer Ballantyne to a term, regular term, ending February 28, 2021. Mr. John Jack Scott to a regular term expiring on the 28th of February 2023. And Ms. Margene Scott to a regular term ending February the 28th, 2023. I'll just stop there for the moment. And then last, I would move to reappoint Brian Davis to the Information Technology Advisory Committee for a regular term, which will end on the 28th of February 2023.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there support for those appointments?
Your Honor, point of clarification, I think Mr. Corbett-
Is there support?
What I do.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It's a part.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to appoint those people to those boards to the terms as stated. Ms. Graffstein?
I think Mr. Corbett said reappoint Ms. Sandoval, and I think she's just, she's no.
I meant that only to Ms. Ballantyne.
Okay.
I'm sorry, my apology.
Thank you. Is there other discussion? Okay, the motion was to appoint Genevieve Sandoval to the Arts Board, Mike Sally to the ECC, and then to the Historical Commission Jennifer Ballantyne, John Jack Scott, and Margene Scott, and to the ITAC, Brian Davis. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion carries. Mr. Corbett asked to abstain from voting on the Zoning Board of Appeals, so would a member of council be so kind to make a motion regarding the ZBA?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Rebbach?
I move that we appoint Linda Corbett to a term ending February 28th, 2023, and Margaret Marinette, also on a term ending February 28th, 2023.
To the ZBA, that is?
The ZBA.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Ms. Graffstein?
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to appoint Linda Corbett and Margaret Marinette to the ZBA. Is there discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Since Councilman Corbett is going to abstain from voting relating to Linda Corbett, I think the motion should be separated on that one.
Okay, I'll hold separate votes. Any other discussion before I, okay. So the first vote will be regarding Linda Corbett, and I'll recognize an abstention from Mr. Bob Corbett. So all that council is considering now is Linda Corbett to a term on the Zoning Board of Appeals to expire February 2023. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. And the one abstention from Mr. Corbett, the motion passes. The next nomination is for Margaret Marinette to the Zoning Board of Appeals on a term to expire February 2023. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion carries. Okay, that concludes this portion of the agenda. We can go on to the minutes. What's the wish of City Council regarding the minutes of the regular City Council meeting of 2:10:20?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mrs. Clerk?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular City Council meeting minutes of 2:10:20.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Support, sir.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of 2:10:20. Is there discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion carries. There's no executive session tonight, so before we adjourn, I'd invite any closing comments from members of City Council and staff. And if you're willing, Mr. Corbett, would you like to begin?
Just a couple of quick items. I will be having, for a couple more weeks anyway, the Friday meet, Friday office hours at the library on Friday from 1:00 to 3:00. I'm there if anybody wants to stop in and complain, or suggest, or compliment. I'm real big on the compliment part. I have some hip surgery coming up towards the end of March. When I get the exact timing on that, I'll know how it may affect the meeting. But I'm probably going to have to miss a meeting or two. Unfortunately, it's liable to fall right around St. Patrick's Day, which has significant implications for me, but we'll set that aside. But anyway, for at least the next couple of weeks, I'll be there on Fridays if anybody would like to stop in. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Rebbach?
Thank you. Yes, I just want to say, as a new City Council person, we have a big learning curve when it comes to a lot of what's going on, and I really appreciate that the city offers us the opportunity to do a lot of trainings. And I will be going to, and I think several of my colleagues will be also going to a training with Michigan Municipal League this week. I think it's really important for anyone who's doing any job to be well-trained and to always seek out more information and to do their, in order to do their very best. So I'm going to be doing that this year, and I know that, like I said, several of my colleagues will be joining me. And I also want to just remind everybody to, the presidential primary is coming up in a couple of weeks, so no matter what you vote for, make sure that you vote.
Thank you. City Attorney, Mr. Sherman?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. City Manager, Mrs. Marsh?
I have nothing this evening.
City Clerk, Ms. Rotman?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just wanted to remind voters that the presidential primary is on March 10. All voting precincts in the city will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Absentee ballots are still available at the city clerk's office. We have same-day registration. You can register to vote up until 8:00 o'clock on Election Day. We do not want you to wait that long, but if you have to, please feel free to do that. And I just want to remind everybody that you have to pick a ballot style, whether you're voting absentee or in-person. Your choices are Democratic ballot, Republican ballot, or a ballot with just the county proposal on it, excuse me, the DIA proposal on it. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Graffstein?
Thank you. I want to thank everybody who came tonight for your comments, and I want to provide the website that Mrs. Holder was referencing. It is, it's a long one, so bear with me. It is oakland.mi.campaignfinance, all one word, dot U.S. And when you go on to that, you can just search, you can search, you can search the municipality, so not just Madison Heights, but you can search any municipality in the county. You could also search by name. So if you had a specific name you wanted to look at, you could search that. So she is absolutely correct that all of our campaign finance, it's twofold. It's the contributions we received, it's also any expenses we paid, so signs, advertising, that kind of thing. So it's all on that website. You can probably Google it if you wanted, but I thought I'd save people the effort of that. That's where the information is. So if you have any questions, go on to that, and you'll be able to see where she's getting this information from. Just wanted to give everyone a quick update on a couple of things that have been going on in the city. I don't know if any, I hadn't particularly heard of this before, but I'm sure that some of our veterans have. There's a project, it's called Operation Homefront, and it's something that Chase Bank is part of, and I'm sure other financial institutions as well. But basically, what happens is when we have veterans who are returning to civilian life, sometimes they have a bit of a difficult time just coming back and finding homes and this kind of thing. And we had a home in our city that was, because it was foreclosed, and it was fixed up, and there is some kind of a lottery system, and they had somewhere between 100 and 300 veterans who wanted this home. And about a week and a half ago, I had the privilege to represent the city when the key was given to this family and to welcome this family to the city. And the woman who, the veteran who was moved in is phenomenal. Her one daughter is already at Hiller, and the Hiller principal was there, and he had nothing but good things to say about the family. And about a week after she moved in, she contacted me, and she said, "You were talking about different boards and commissions. How can I find out about getting on to one of these boards and commissions?" She hasn't even been here a month, and she wanted to get active. And I'm like, "This is perfect. This is the kind of person that we want in our city. These are the kind of people that we want." And, you know, I think it's a great program. So I don't know very much about it. This is really the first that I've had the opportunity to find out anything about it. But there are a lot of programs that are out there that help bring people to the city, people who want to be part of our community. So if you know of any others, and if there's any way that the city can somehow get involved, please let us know. Also want to mention, Mrs. Rotman mentioned the DIA millage is coming up. So a couple of weeks ago, the mayor and I were at the Oakland County Leaders event at the DIA, which was really nice because we were able to walk around and talk to other Oakland County leaders, and just see what the DIA has to offer. And they were talking about all the different programs that they have and how they bus kids in from the three different counties. So that was really, that was really nice. And I think that's about, that's about it for, thank you, everybody who came tonight. I really appreciate seeing everybody here.
Thank you. Mrs. Clerk?
Yes, thank you. Also, thanks, everybody, for coming. It's extremely important that you come here and that you talk about the things that concern you. Public opinion is what helps shape the policies that we make, so we internalize all of it, and I appreciate you bringing it to our attention. For the gentlemen who addressed some of the litter on 14 Mile, I know this great group called the Madison Heights Beautification Project. I can get ahold of all those people and see if we can't get them on some of the hotspots in the city to clean this up in time for spring, so that it looks nice and beautiful when the green starts popping through. Shout-out to the parents, faculty members, and district residents fighting the good fight at Madison School Board meetings. I commend all the residents working so hard to advocate for our children in the Madison Heights District. It's, they're having a difficult struggle over there, but the residents are really coming together, and they're prioritizing what's important, which is the children's needs. So it's exciting to kind of see that unfold. I'd like to go over some events that I know are coming up in the city, but I looked at my Facebook, and there isn't a lot going on in terms of people publishing them. So if you publish them, I will say them out loud at my closing comment. But one that I'm particularly excited about is Parks and Rec Trivia Night on March 1st at 6:00 p.m. at Cadillac Straits Brewing Company. I do intend on winning that trivia night, so if you're coming, be prepared for a good fight. I host public open hours live on Facebook on Fridays from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. I always go over the events that are going on in the city. I talk about stuff that we talk about at City Council meetings, and any other advocacy issues that we face during the week between the times I go live. You're welcome to ask me any questions you want. If I'm able to answer them, I will. Or I also post links very frequently to some of the informational spots on websites that you can get to for the city. I'm also hosting a Facebook for Communities event on March 28 in the Breckin Ridge Room at the library. It's a free event. It's open to the public. It's open to all ages. I kind of want to show you what I've discovered as a good way to utilize the tools that Facebook has to offer to come together with the residents in your community. There are tons of organizations out there that are organizing and getting volunteers to do cleanups, to plant pollinating plants, to feed children, to organize diaper drives, and to feed the homeless, and all kinds of good stuff. I'd love to show you where all those pockets are on the Internet and get you as involved as possible. So that's March 28, and that is from 11:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. And that's all I have for today. Thanks so much for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Soltis.
Thank you, Your Honor. So we know that we're, we had our third game at the Parks and Rec Basketball League, so that was like 10, 11-year-olds, and the chief of police is my assistant coach. And so we're 3-0 right now, so I know, but they're going to be gunning for us, so we got a lot more games left. But it's a lot of fun. The kids play their hearts out. It's really organized and fun, so it's all good for a good cause. And I just wanted to ask the city manager about the Michigan, what, My Life Health and Wellness Center that we have here. I know you probably sent out a report. I was just wondering if you could kind of send out another report with some of the statistics. If you go over like the business model again, what it's structured, like in terms of the doctors, there's a doctor and an RN that comes out. Are they on call, or is it fee-for-service, or, you know, how often do they? I'm sorry, were you going to say something?
I was going to answer, but I can write you a report as well.
Okay. The total cost of all that, and I think it's been going on for four years, or?
Since 2015.
2015. All right, well, that's six years. And how many people use it? How often? I'd be interested. And just by chance, if you could look at the possibility of maybe using that as a free clinic for residents, you know, don't have insurance? I'd be interested in that. Ferndale's got one, but I think they're having, well, I know Ferndale does. And so I don't know if the city does, of course, but it's housed in Ferndale. But I was just curious what it would take, if you could just find that out for me.